I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on our agenda, 158 Orange Avenue, to permit the conversion of a garage for two, to two apartments. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeal to the Village of Suffolk will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 30th, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Or as soon thereafter as possible at the Suffolk Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffolk, New York, 10901, on an appeal by Philip, Philip Landau, 158 Orange Avenue. Suffolk, New York, 109, are going to permit the use of variance at 158 Orange Avenue, Suffolk, New York, to convert the first and second floor of the garage into two apartments. The approval of such an appeal requires variances from the requirements of Section 266-15. There shall be no more than one main building or one lot. In addition, the approval of such an appeal requires variances from requirements of Section 266-23, Column 36 and 8. The applicant is proposing an area variance of the lot area of 10,791 square feet from the required 16,000 square feet side yard of 3.5 existing condition from the required 15 feet rear yard 3.5, existing condition from the required 20. The premises affected are situated on the east side of Orange Avenue and is on the north side of East Maltby. The property is listed on the Village of Suffolk and Town Tax Maps as Section 5443, Lot 2, Lot Number 50. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Landau?
Hi, how are you? Philip Landau.
And I'm Armando Lorenz. I'm a attorney representing him.
Raise your right hand.
Me.
Yeah, swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Let me go. Uh, okay, so I'm not an attorney, just a businessman, a layman, um, and have owned this house since 1983. Um, actually, there are three requests. So one request is, which should be in there, is, um, in the main apartment house is a duplex and each floor is a two-bedroom, one-bath. And because we're an existing non-conforming, we can only have 10 total units. And it's harder to rent a four-bedroom, two-bath than it would be if they were just separated. It doesn't really have any impact other than that I could rent to two separate people a two-bedroom, one-bath instead of one person, a four-bedroom, two-bath. That's, I would just have to put a stove on the upstairs unit. They're, they're basically separated already. So that was the first request. The second request, which I thought was in there as well, is that we have eight, uh, what are like hotel rooms, to single-room occupancy, literally like from the outside you go in, it's one bedroom, a bathroom, and a closet, eight of those. One of those units is right next to or connects to, separated by a wall, a fairly good-sized utility storage room. So if I could connect those two, then I could add a little kitchenette and a single-room occupancy becomes an efficiency apartment. So that was a, in, in each case, I can increase the rents, obviously. And then there's the garage, obviously, which is, uh, I mean, the buildings are built, they've been there forever. Um, we're not asking to put a massage parlor or something in there. It's basically consistent with, it's a residential neighborhood, you've all probably seen it, so, um, it just seems logical in my attempt to get the most efficiency out of this place, to convert it into two apartments. I mean, I know that there are, is a maze of ordinances and things that have to be threaded. That's why Armando is here, but, um, that's my goal, that's my intention, and I, I mean, I think in any, from any real practical sense or common sense approach, what is the true impact of a couple of cars and a few extra people on that street in that neighborhood? Particularly when you consider the funeral home, which is a huge impact onto the, you know, often when they're busy, so, um, that's it. That's, that's my point. Opened any questions you might have that I can answer?
Well, before you go further, I, I don't see any application for anything related to the hotel.
You never put anything in on the, uh, the two units?
It's from the original building permit that was denied.
Well, that's, that's not the board.
Was it part of his application?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if it's not there, then we'll come back to that, but that was, I thought that that was there. You're talking about the, the two existing apartments?
What you're talking, let's go one by one. I don't see anything for the main duplex that you're talking about, right? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on the board, I don't see anything for that. I don't think you see anything for the SROs. All we have here is for the garage.
Okay, fine, then that's all we'll talk about. We'll come back to that, to those two.
Well, that would certainly, I mean, all of them.
Oh, that would have an impact on the conversation.
Frankly, probably impacted. Um, and just procedurally, like, I'm not sure where we are. I mean, I know there's, this just kind of says about the garage, so.
Okay, my, my misunderstanding and obviously a mistake, so.
Yeah.
Would you like, would you like us to put that in and come back, or?
Well, in turn, it's really up to you, but I don't, I don't think that the board can really act on.
Okay, I understand that.
Frankly, for your benefit in a way, because they're not, knowing that there's other things coming, I don't, you know, they can't look at the one thing and not the other. If you're gonna do all of this, I would suggest you put it together in one package.
Okay, fine. I agree with you, actually.
Can I ask Mr. Landau a question?
Of course.
Uh, can you make the property available to look at? Cause I was there the other day and looking around the property, but I couldn't go inside this.
100%.
All right, if there's a time that we can, maybe all the board members can go in and see what you're doing.
100%.
Into that problem.
I'm gonna be away for two weeks after the 13th. We can, we can, uh, we can do it then.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure, really.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your, your attorney's name, sir. I didn't catch your name, your last name?
Armando Lorenz.
Lorenz?
Um, can I have one other question for Mr. Landau? Do you own any other properties in the Village of Suffolk besides the 158 on Orange Avenue?
Yes, actually, I do. Uh, right next door to, I mean, the address is 158 Orange Avenue, but it's also on Maltby. So right next to my property at 48 East Maltby is a two-family, which I also own. So I own the two properties right next to each other.
No other properties?
In Suffolk, no.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you saw the county planning weighed in on this, at least with respect to the garage.
Yeah, can I speak to that? Um, I only saw that today. Uh, the email that was sent to me went to my spam folder while I was looking for another document. Uh, and what I wanted to start our presentation with was, was ask for an opportunity before we make a final determination to be permitted to respond. We think there are a number of inaccurate statements on a number of points and believe it would be better if we created a written response for you rather than try to respond just orally right now.
Yeah, um, yes, and also, and I'm sorry, you know, but I'll just put it out there for the record, in order to, if the board weren't entertaining, you would need a supermajority of override of that, so.
Can you explain that to me?
When the county planning, in this case, they actually disapproved the application from their perspective. Sometimes they recommend modifications, sometimes a disapproval. Either way, if the board were to act contrary to their recommendation, which their recommendation is a disapproval, they would need a supermajority of the board. So ordinarily, you need three votes out of five to get a variance. You would need four votes to override, four out of five, that's all. And what I was gonna point out, and your counsel's like, where? There's only four members here tonight, so.
You need a majority, you need everyone.
Well, right, so.
Voting tonight, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, my, you know, if, if you have other relief you're asking for, it would seem to make sense to come all at once.
Yes, we would understand. I don't know how much you wanna hear about this particular, uh, respond from Rockland County. There's just some obvious errors that I wanna point out, just to give you some context. It says that there's a national or state historic site, uh, there, and that's, I don't know where they got that from. They said there were endangered species on the lot. With all due respect, there aren't. Uh, it is riddled with errors and, and just requires a written response that I would love for the board to consider before it takes any further action on this matter.
And the only other thing I would suggest, you know, when you were describing it, I could, with the pictures here, I really couldn't orient myself. Maybe some more pictures and a clearer plan. I don't know if you have a site plan?
Yeah, the, the, uh, the county planning board correspondence requested a sort of a site map that reaches to the street, uh, gives the street line, uh, perhaps photos of the street itself would be of use to give a better perspective with regard to the parking situation. Uh, the, uh, the, the other issue that I, that's more policy than legal, is the Rockland County correspondent's references, understanding the need for more housing in the neighborhood, but is adamantly looking for reasons, in our opinion, to, to, to disavow, to disapprove a plan. This is a modest proposal, uh, which, uh, is consistent with the nature of the neighborhood. It, in fact, will enhance the neighborhood. Uh, the, the character will be served by this modest change. There will be no new structures created. There would be no increase in bulk in the sense of buildings.
Are you gonna, are you gonna change the aesthetic qualities of the garage to make it look more like a, a, a building of, you know?
Well, certainly the garage doors would go.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
And it would have, probably have, you know, an entrance door and maybe a staircase on the side, cause I assume you need two ways in and two ways out, right? When you go upstairs.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, it would probably look more like, uh, less like, not like a garage and more like an apartment or.
That's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
And the only other thing I would ask, maybe, again, a narrative, it was a little, uh, not, you're, just the whole thing, that the, the building inspector's denial and the narrative were hard to jive, for lack of a better term. Uh, put something other than jive in the listen.
Hard to harmonize, yeah, I understand. Yeah, we have a different view.
But I guess what I'm saying is, I think if, if a plan, a site plan and a narrative discussing each thing, I mean, you know, no more than one building on lot, I get that. Um, and the nonconformity of the use, you know, I don't, I guess the nonconformity being, um, the SRO, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure.
No, no. No, the, the, the nonconforming use is actually the bulk.
Well, what about PO 15?
No, that can't be.
Now, they changed the zoning. Professional office is 15, I think.
Well, they're saying a nonconforming structure. So a nonconforming use wouldn't be.
Oh, I thought it was a nonconforming use. I won't?
No, it is. No, he's saying nonconforming use of land may be continued, but it should not be physically enlarged. You don't get to the enlarging part unless the use is not permitted. I don't know, I suppose he's talking about the garage?
No.
How are we enlarging it?
Hold on a second. No, I spoke with the building inspector and his point of view was that the residential use of the property was nonconforming because of the bulk. With, his argument was that increasing the use of the, of residential use on that space would be nonconforming and not permitted. I don't agree, as I stated in my narrative. Uh, I believe that it is a continued use that conforms with PO 15, but yes, the, the, it doesn't conform because it currently doesn't conform to the bulk requirements.
So your position is, as a use?
Yes.
It conforms to the use?
Yes, residential use is permitted in the, in the PO 15. Okay. That, that is sort of our position with regard to the county's argument. We, we are not changing any structures. Uh, we do admit that having two, uh, new apartments and, uh, will increase the number of residents on the lot, uh, and that could well increase the parking requirements. We believe we have answers for that. We believe we have, uh, a basis for approving our plan as, as solving that problem. Uh, we will certainly want to give you a little more detail on that in our supplemental submission, but the, to us, that is the one true variance, not in the legal sense, but in the sense of what the lot is now and what it will be if, if we did this project. There could be one or two more cars that, in, in the neighborhood. That is what we think the change would be. Now, the, uh, the, uh, the county talked about traffic demands and sewage demands. We don't, we expect that if the, if the sewage, uh, department of the county weighs in, they will recognize that, in fact, that won't be an issue. Uh, already, the state has said that it has no impact on the highway. Um, the, the, the reality is, we think this project will be beneficial to the area, beneficial to the village, and of course, beneficial to my client, uh, who we believe would be suffering a hardship, or suffering in a unique hardship here because his current use, which is deemed nonconforming by the building inspector at any rate, uh, was because of the intensity of the residential use because of the buildings. We think that unless he's gonna tear down and put up a massage parlor, which I doubt would be approved, but the idea being, he has a right to make a commercial building there, um, this is the way he can get a reasonable return on his investment in the property. We're talking about a 77% potential revenue increase. Now, uh, my client said to me just today, you know, I'm, good luck to him if increasing your income by 77% is no big deal, uh, but it's a big deal to me.
Yeah, but that's not the stat. I mean, you know, it, it's that you can't realize a reasonable rate of return. So the fact that you can realize a fantastic rate of return is not really what this board, uh, bases its decision on. It's whether or not, it's the opposite. It's really whether or not you're.
Losing money.
You're so, that the property is so worthless as currently zoned, that's really what it, what it means. And frankly, you know, it goes to your point of PO 15 or whatever it is, you know, it could be sold as commercial or, or, yeah, I mean, I, I just, the 77%, you certainly obviously have a right to put it up there, but I'm just pointing out for the board that just because you can make more on it, doesn't mean that that's a basis for granting a variance.
Well, I, I, I would agree with the, well, you, you'll make the decision, of course, but it, I think the magnitude of the potential return should factor into the reasonableness of the restriction.
Um, let me ask you, I'm sorry, I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. Um, go to the garage issue. That would create two, um, separate, not uses, but two, two main buildings or two buildings with residential there.
That's right.
What's your take in terms of?
Upstairs apartment and down.
No, I understand. What's your take in terms of use variance or, or area variance on that?
Well, my, our, my point of view is that the current code doesn't, uh, in fact, it does permit multi-building residential use, uh, multi-building and multi-fa, and multifamily residential use. Now, whether that's.
I don't know that it allows multi-building.
Pardon?
It doesn't allow multi-building.
It, you are, you're empowered, I have to look at my notes, but my view is that you're empowered to permit, uh, that, uh, if you believe it is, uh, within the spirit of the policy of the zoning of the area.
How, how many units are in the first and the one building?
Okay, there are, there are 10 units currently. There are eight single-room occupancies.
Okay.
Like hotel rooms from the outside.
Okay.
And then there are two apartments, and one of the apartments, I think, is a two-bedroom, and the other one is just the, the, the by-level four that I want to split. So what I'm proposing is, if it's not here, you don't have the documents, but is to go from the 10 to 11. And ultimately, if the two, if the garage was approved, it would be from 10 to 13.
So currently, that exists now is, is 10?
10, correct.
I think when you come back with the overall picture of the property, I think everybody will understand, so, you know, certainly if the board members have questions, my suggestion would be, you probably need some time to put it together.
We will.
I don't think you'd have it back in time for even the next meeting, you know, which is April. I would, I would suggest if you wanna ask for a continuance till May, submit well in advance so that things can get circulated, and then, then the board can have some time to look at it. Again, I don't know if Bruce, at least, had any questions?
I agree that it's not fully prepared.
Yes. Me too. All right, so you wanna ask for a continuance to May?
Excuse me?
Are you asking for a continuance of the hearing until May?
Yes, absolutely.
I would like to ask for a continuance.
Okay. Till May.
I'm a little.
I'll make the motion, granting continuance of the hearing on 158 Orange until the meeting in May.
Second.
Till you, May, May, May.
May 18th?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
If, if any board member is interested in touring the, the site, please, I will.
Yeah, if you could maybe make it convenient for maybe for yourself, maybe you can set up a time after hours, after five or like six o'clock, where we can have a designated time to come by. Down the line, it doesn't have to.
A couple of weeks.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we would reach you through the, through the village?
Clear.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Lorenz, if you wanna, I can give you my contact info if you wanna chat before the next step.
Yes, sir.
I can give you my card.
All right, second on our agenda is Rodolfo Nanum. Okay, good, that's good. Okay, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeal to the Village of Suffolk will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 16th, 2023, at 7:35 PM, or as soon thereafter as possible at the Suffolk Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffolk, New York, 10901, on an appeal by Rodolfo Jesus Nanum of Five Valley View Terrace, Suffolk, New York, 10901, to permit area variance at Five Valley View Terrace, Suffolk, New York, to park commercial vehicles in front yard. The approval of such an appeal requires variances from the requirements of Section 266-36.1B, Commercial Vehicle in Residential Districts. For purposes of this section, commercial vehicle shall mean any motor vehicle used for commercial purposes, including but not limited to a vehicle used for hire or used for repair, service, installation, inspection, landscaping, or snow plowing purposes. The premises affected are situated on the west side of Valley View Terrace and is 200 feet north of Meadow Brook Lane. The property is listed on the Village of Suffolk and Town of Ramapo Tax Maps as Section 55.61-1-86, 17-346 Lot AG2. Okay. Oh, Rodolfo, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, tell us what you want.
So I'm his brother, Angel, I'm gonna be speaking on his behalf.
Okay.
We are simply requesting a variance to continue parking our cars in the front yard. We have a house, small house, lovely house, uh, that it doesn't have garage, it's just a, a driving, driveway, which is in the front yard. Uh, we have four cars, they all, uh, professional liveries, and they're unmarked. They have no log, they, they have no logo, they have no signs, so no one will know that they're commercial, because if you have a picture there, they look like a regular car. Only that, the difference is that it has a license plate that says a livery, that's all it is. Our car is our livelihood, our cars is also our personal means of transportation, so we have no way of transporting ourselves if we can have those cars there. And we've been in the community for about four or five years. We, you know, we don't repair cars there, we don't do anything, we are not noisy, we're just normal citizens from the community that are, are working on those cars to put a roof over our head and food on, on the table. All we're asking is, if you see a picture that you have there, the house is, the driver is what it is, there's no garage, there's no way to build, there's no way to park any other places. And then you have another picture that shows the four cars that are sitting there, uh, which are very regular, common cars, they're not big cars, they're not, you know, continental or signed cars, it's just regular cars. And we're here in front of this board to request, to allow us to park in our house, otherwise this becomes really a very, uh, safety issue for us and a hardship, because if we don't have any car at night, they, they, at eight o'clock, they go to work, we go to work, they're not there, and we come back, you know, between four, five, and six, and then they're there. Uh, and if we're not gonna have the car there, where we're there at nine, it becomes really a, really a safety problem for us. God forbid something should happen, we have no way to move or take the transportation. So we respectfully requesting just to continue parking our car there.
Four, four cars, have commercial plates?
They all have, yeah. Rather than us doing the Uber or Lyft, we are really being extra cautious and purchase, deliver, which that insurance is very, very expensive.
They were all used for Uber?
No, they're not used for Uber.
Oh, they didn't?
Rather than doing Uber?
Oh, you do.
We rather use the legal way and purchase the insurance.
You're saying instead of using Uber, they've gone out and bought, they've gotten a livery license instead of the.
We, we could do U, Uber, and not have the livery license and save a lot of money, but we'd rather be on the right side of the law and have the livery license and be protected. That's all what it is.
Okay. You ever park in the street?
Do we park in the street? No. The cars always park on the driveway.
But you could park in the street, right?
But I was told that if we park in the street, then the town goes around and give us a deacon.
For commercial vehicle?
That's what they said. That's what we were told.
All right. Good. Anybody got any more questions they want to take out?
Well, I kinda have an opinion.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I sympathized, I read the letter that you wrote, and I sympathized with your situation. Um, I drove past the house several times, saw three cars, four cars, and like you said, they are very nondescript, they're black, they have.
don't have a, I 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 don't have a, I